Items of interest from the community? Okay. Information from the student representatives.
For this month at Great Oak, during reading workshops, second graders at Great Oak have learned the importance of rereading to improve their fluency. They practice reading fluently and listening to themselves read. Students are also using posted notes to set their reading goals for the day and also for the unit. Fourth graders have begun a research unit and reading workshop where they are learning note-taking strategies and that readers focus on who, when, where, and when reading historical texts.
At Highlands, the second grade team had their end-of-unit reading celebration in which every student chose a book that they had to independently read and then shared the title, the main character, and a word to describe the character and a lesson that they learned while reading the book. It was wonderful to see the excitement of each student as they shared with their classmates. Last week, the fifth grade students also had the pleasure of having Kim Chaffey, author of "Her Fearless Run: Catherine Switcher's Historic Boston Marathon," as our author-in-residence for the day. She taught students about using a different voice to convey their messages when writing. And Kim did a whole school visit in December and will also be coming this week to be doing a residency with grade three and four. And they also just want to thank the Highlands PAC and the reading specialist, Mrs. Bell, for sponsoring the event.
At Riverside, for the past two months, Riverside implemented a morning read. Several days a week, students join Ms. Powers from 7:45 to 8:15 a.m. in the library and read. Just read. They may bring books from home or read books from the library. It's not just another wonderful opportunity for children to read, but also a great way to start a school day in a calm way. Most recently, book buckets have been placed in the hallways throughout the building. When students need to take a break, they are able to stop by a book bucket, take a few minutes to read a book, and then get back to class. Signs have been placed near the buckets that say "Keep calm and read a book."
At Smith, last Thursday, the kindergarten students in Ms. Lawler's class had a special visit from Riverside's principal, Mrs. Powers, and Daisy during their social-emotional learning block. Mrs. Powers shared with her student Daisy's background and her training, and she participated in becoming a certified therapy dog. Students enjoyed getting to know Daisy and especially loved reading to her. Having Daisy visit the classroom put everyone in a green zone and set the students up for success. I know I would be in the green zone if there was a dog in the class. Third graders are also working on grasping the main ideas and text structures in their reading. In their most recent lessons, they were chunking each section of the text and asking, is this new information, or are they building on something that they had already known? And the groups of students are focusing on a different animal and working to identify various categories of information.
At Thorpe, in recent weeks, the third graders have been learning about the life and times of Martin Luther King Jr. as they prepare for this week's assembly on Friday, January 17th at 9:00 a.m. They have been reading poetry, nonfiction texts, and other primary sources to deepen their understanding of the era. The work of Martin Luther King Jr. and the impact he had on society. In addition, across the grade level SEL, time has been focused on teachings of Dr. King and his messages of kindness and acceptance. During Reader's Workshop, the second graders have begun a nonfiction reading unit focused on getting a deeper understanding of the main idea and supporting details and making connections between different texts on the same subject.
At the middle school, on the early release day, HRMS held its monthly project talk meeting. Students and staff focused on the SEL concepts of self-management and thinking about positive New Year's resolutions. Students and staff set goals to better themselves or the whole school community, and students and staff recorded their goals and then turned them into their teachers. The goals will be later reviewed in the year.
At DHS, students in advanced studio art recently participated in a memory portrait project. The goal of the project was to create a kinder world through art. As part of the project, students created portraits of orphans from other countries and wrote a personalized message for the children. Thanks to Mrs. Johnson for providing students with this opportunity to practice the social-emotional competency of social awareness. As we speak, the amazing Danvers chapters of Best Buddies is holding a snowball dance. This dance supports inclusion, and we are happy to welcome best buddy chapters from surrounding communities to DHS tonight.
That's what that fun music is, Owen.
Thank you very much for that. Lots of great things happening in all the schools. Thank you. Actually, the studio art for the high school that was highlighted, I think, I know online in the Danvers Herald the other day, so if you're interested, you can look that up or check out this week's issue. There was some great artwork by the students. Information from the superintendent.
Thank you. We are happy this evening to welcome Gail Bernard from our DPW and our sixth graders in their poster contest. Our winners, and to be able to present the calendar and to thank all of our students. Thank you, Gail.
Hi, I'm Gail Bernard. I'm the program coordinator for the Danvers Department of Public Works. Every year, we go into Holton Richmond Middle School, and we go to the art classes in the sixth grade, and we ask them to teach the community about a certain topic that we feel that we want to teach our residents about. This year, we decided to do renewable energy. So it's not simple recycling or water conservation like we've done year after year. So these kids had a really difficult task to try to figure out how to let people know what types of renewable energy sources are out there. So it's something that we won't run out of, like fossil fuel. So the wind, the water, things like that. So these kids not only had to learn about what renewable energy was, but they had to put lessons together in a picture and get residents' messages on this is what we want to be doing. So they did an incredible job this year. It was a really difficult topic, and you guys should all be very, very proud of yourselves because I know that we are. So I want to thank you guys for all your hard work, and we have some awards for you, and we have a little gift. And when we call your name, maybe if you guys come up to the front, and maybe should they stay there for pictures?
Yes.
Okay.
And then parents can take pictures once we have them all up here.
And I want to say, I want to thank Adam Federico and Anna Bond and Jeff Sorette for all their support. Amazing.
Thank you for bringing us this opportunity. We had just over 200 students competing in the competition, and we have our 13 winners right up here on the board. And we also have the calendars. Beautiful calendars have been published, and you'll be able to leave this evening with at least one, if not two, for your families to take home. So our first award goes to Giovanna Barris. Our next award goes to Claudia Drakeus. And Anthony Gardino. Sorry about that. Addie Lamar. Ashley Taylor. Isabella Velazquez. Kira Vo. Dossel Vogel. Mia Walsh. Benjamin Vilhoom. And we have two other winners who weren't able to make it this evening. Skylar Dempsey and Alex Roy.
All right. Congratulations to all of you, and we'll take a few moments for your families to take some pictures.
I think you guys actually maybe stand in front of the tables. There'll be a little bit more room to spread out, and then the parents may maybe come right to the center aisle.
Thank you, Mr. Taverna.
Yeah, so you guys go right here now, back towards us. Parents, don't be shy. Come on up.
Oh, dear.
Let's try doing this.
I know, that's all right. As long as we're moving.
True, true, true.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. And we will take a moment to transition so that way you can head home and continue with the rest of your evening and getting ready for our week of school. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Beautiful artwork. Thank you.
Something good, I hope. Can't go wrong with ice cream. I definitely want to go. So what you're paying.
I've got my notes from Danvers.
Wow.
Where'd everyone go?
Yeah, I know, right?
Thank you.
As usual, Adam's left.
Congratulations. Last man standing.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Okay, thank you.
Nobody's brave enough to come into the front.
Come closer.
Nature never changes.
All right. Great. So next, we have our mentoring new teacher induction update. We do this on a yearly basis, usually at this meeting in January, and I would like to welcome our new team working together on behalf of our new teachers. And Mary Worms is going to introduce our team and set the context for their presentation. Thank you.
Yes, so we have two new members to our mentor coordinators. We have one at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. So we have Cindy Grady continuing on from the past team as the elementary representative. We have Anna Corbett from the middle school, who's new to our team, and Alex Grover, who's new to the team as well. So they're going to come up and give you an update on the team. It's been a nice transition. I've done a lot of planning with them and work, and this team, I think, has done a little bit of a transition to focus on social-emotional learning as well as part of our new strategic plan and then the strengths of the team. So come on up.
Hey, thank you, Mary, very much, and good evening. Well, we're very excited to be here this evening and to share with you some of the changes that we've made to our mentor-mentee meetings each month. And one of the changes that we've made is we've added a social-emotional learning piece to our monthly meetings. So our mentors and mentees participate in SEL activities that have to do with self-awareness or building relationships, and they take these activities back to the classroom with them. And this year, it's exciting because we share ideas, and we expand upon those ideas in a way to support each other and to support our students throughout the learning day. So it has been really exciting to incorporate these activities. Another thing that we've done in our monthly meetings is to add more technology. So Alex is going to take a moment to explain that to you.
So our effort to incorporate more technology into the mentor-mentee program and our meetings is sort of twofold in our mind. One, we're trying to go as paperless as possible. So, for example, all of our agendas and all of our readings are electronic, and we have Chromebooks, fortunately, in the library here at Danvers High School that we can give to mentors or mentees who don't have their own Chromebook or didn't bring their own Chromebook. And also, the work we do on the Chromebook is we've created a Google Classroom to house sort of all these materials. So that's the second reason we want to incorporate technology. And the Google Classroom is a great tool. One, because it's what we use with our students, so we're sort of mirroring what is being done in the classroom with our mentors and our mentees. And on that, we have everything, like I said, from our agendas to our readings to a slide that has a lot of contacts that have been to our mentor-mentee meetings, that they can go back and look at their email address if they need to contact somebody for support. Sort of have our Wheel of Support slide on there. And then, an example just from today, is we converted a survey that used to be taken on paper to on a Google form, and the mentors and mentees took the survey, and then we could see the results in real time, and we used the results as sort of an impetus and a jump starter for our discussion, which today was centered around listening and giving and receiving feedback and reflection. So technology has helped us a lot through our mentor-mentee meetings this year, and we're excited to even do more with it, which Anna's going to talk about because we've created a video that we're excited to show you.
We also want to acknowledge our collective work as a community of educators, families, and administrators, who all create the strong foundation that supports the creativity and innovation of our new educators. We strive to ensure our learning environments are places where everyone feels encouraged and inspired in their endeavors to make a lasting and meaningful impact on all our learners. So Cindy, Alex, and I thought the most poignant way to show you the significance of our mentor-mentee program is to hear from some of the mentor and mentees through our video that we made.
Thank you.
So having the mentor meetings in addition to the mentor program, I think has been really great because it puts a lot of things on my radar that I haven't really been thinking about, like the binder that I have to come up with by the end of the year, that sort of thing. It just sort of helps me understand what my sort of duties are as a teacher in a public school.
So far, my experience in Danvers has been really a positive one. I feel like everyone has been really welcoming to me, and I've gotten a lot of support from a lot of, a variety of individuals, which has been really nice. So I've gotten to work with quite a few different pockets of the school, which I've enjoyed.
So a student I've had a positive interaction with is one that I found very difficult to work with in the beginning of the year. Over time, I feel our relationship has gotten a lot better, and today I actually found a daughter of mine, yes, saying how much she appreciated having me as his teacher.
So over the year, I've had lots of great interactions with many students. One of my favorites is that I have a friend who likes to come in the mornings and join us together and talk about our evenings, talk about the day ahead of us, and it's a great way for both of us to really start off this positively.
One thing my mentees have really done to contribute positively to this community is that she's really supported these social-emotional needs of students.
So I really appreciated this year in our mentor meetings that time has been taken each time we connect to focus on the social-emotional parts of the work that we do, whether it's talking about self-care, the things we can do to make ourselves healthy, but also focus on supporting each other, the positive things we can be doing in the classroom, really reinforcing a culture of positive ideas, positive exchanges, positive activities that we do to help each other and support each other. So I really appreciate that we've been taking the time during the mentoring program to do those kinds of check-ins and special activities and just acknowledging all the good things that we do.
It's important to have a strong mentor-mentee relationship because we want teachers to feel part of the community, we want them to feel supported.
It's made my teaching stronger, remembering that we all started off in the same place and where we come from. And I had the same thing when I came here and I'm still here a really long time later.
Good? All right. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions? Dave? Comments?
Nope. Anytime we can hear from Mrs. Grady is a good night, so I'm good.
It's been many years hearing from Mrs. Grady. It's always good to hear. And that was good, that was you singing on that too, right, Mr. Grover? No, great. It's a great program, as always, so we're happy to hear about it every year.
Eric?
Yeah, the mentoring program, I think I've said before, has been looked to, I think it was any ASM C and other, I know they looked at it as sort of a model for other districts, and I think that's something for you to be proud of. We're so glad that, because this is really something teachers sort of roll with, and with Mary's help and the staff's help, but you have to be dedicated to this, and clearly you and the mentors and the mentees really are. And I think it's a great way to create an atmosphere where people want to stay here, and it's just something that we, as a district, are happy and proud and thank you for doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, no, I mean, I probably ask this question every year, but I'll ask it again because I don't read my notes from previous years. But the, so the mentor program, I mean, it seems to me a lot of information is out there about things like social-emotional learning, and you can easily watch a video or read a book and learn that. But to me, it's always about the feedback that's given. Can you just say a couple words about what feedback is usually requested from mentees, and then how does that feedback work from the mentors? Like, is there a question, or is it mostly, okay, just a general sort of one-way conversation? What's that feedback loop like? Well, at each meeting, there's one constant that happens at our monthly meetings because we meet one Monday each month, and it's sort of this worksheet that we have, which is what's going well for you, what do you need to do to improve, or how can we support you? And I think it's definitely, to answer your question, a two-way street because at our meetings, there's back and forth between the mentors and the mentees, and that's what we encourage them to do outside of our meetings as well. So there's definitely a structured way that we have them initiate our conversations in our meetings and hopefully outside as well, so that they're hearing about experiences that their mentor has had, and the mentor's hearing about experiences that their mentee has had, so that there's always that, like, sort of like cyclical dialogue happening between them. Hopefully, that answered your question. Yeah, no, and I think, and I remember asking some similar, but sort of the topics that come up in these one-on-one conversations. I mean, we get, you've had examples of students. Is it normally, how do I deal with students? Is it, how do I, you know, grasp a new topic? Is it career advancement? Is it career opportunities? Like, what are some of the topics that are typically coming back and forth? Yeah, actually, that thing actually just happened at this past meeting. So we, the three of us meet monthly as well before the meetings to kind of go over the agenda, and one of the things that came up was ways and strategies that mentees and even mentors can do to receive feedback. So our whole agenda today at our meeting from 3:15 to 5:15 was about being able to listen and being able to receive feedback in a productive way, and that could happen for any topic. Like Mary and Lisa said, we're specifically focusing on social-emotional learning this year, and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that. So we're even a part of it, too. We hear the feedback from the mentees, or the mentors, or the administration, or the other teachers, and we try to incorporate those things into our monthly agendas, so. I mean, that to me would be like the absolute, just invaluable to have that all the time. So that's great, so. Yeah, I think it's easy to, what I've seen with this program, even just working in it a couple months now, it would be easier for us, especially as teachers, to kind of stick to the structure and stick to what we do year to year, but it's abundantly clear that we just kind of need to roll with it and do what needs to be done as we differentiate for our students. You know, we're talking about differentiation in our early release professional development this week. You know, we need to do what is needed from our teachers and our mentors and our mentees, just as we do for our students. So we treat it the same way. Good. That's great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. It is a great program, and I'm so glad that we have it here in Danvers, and it's a benefit not only to the staff, but to the students and to the community, the school community. So thank you very much for doing it, and keep up the great work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just also want to give a special thank you to David Buckoff and Mary Franz, who retired from their positions that Anna and Alex were able to come into, but Dave and Mary gave us so many great years of being mentor coordinators, and we really appreciate their work with us in the past few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think what Mary's going to talk about in just one moment, a brief overview for the strategic planning, and then what we'll see with the program of studies, is that through our visioning, through our work, through the ECLC grants as a resource in professional development, how it all connects and continues to evolve based on the needs of our community, our teachers, and our students. So we're grateful for all of our teacher leaders and their work, and all of our faculty and staff that are working with our students. Okay, so we're going to move to strategic planning update.
Okay, great. So as Lisa said, I've been working with my teacher leaders to put together a presentation for the ECLC committee. They would like to do a showcase of learning, and they're going to hold it February in Salem. And all the districts that were what they call now the Cohort One districts are going to present the work that they've done in the past two years. So the six districts will be there presenting, and there's the second cohort of districts that are coming in. And so they'll get to learn some lessons from the work we've done and get ready for their work with the grant group. So we are going to be coming in February to the school committee and turning around and doing a little bit of that presentation for you as well. We'll do a shorter version of the presentation, but it will be, I think, really most of our mid-year accomplishments. And then what's great about it is that the teacher leaders have had so much, you know, at stake in this work that we have done, that they've, you know, really co-led a lot of the, especially around the social-emotional learning, co-led that work, also around the multi-tier system of support. We have a great team doing that. And then we also have a culture-responsive group, too, that's been working with us. So we're looking forward to our presentation in February. We still have a little bit more work to do, and then we'll be ready to highlight that with you in February at the school committee meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anyone?
Leads us right into a facilities update.
So the work at the Smith School continues. Foundations are going in as we speak, and you can really start to see the outline of the building. Steel will be delivered, start being delivered on February 3rd. So sometime during the month of February, you'll start to see the building actually going up more than it's just going down right now in terms of foundations. We were able to get a piece of software or a camera that takes photos. We actually posted this to our social media, thank you to Whitney, a few weeks ago, but we thought we would show this, that kind of shows the progress from the summer through recently. So actually, we're actually able to program the system to send us videos. So you'll see more of this on social media, trying to help keep the community updated to the progress of the project. But just a cool kind of snapshot in 30 seconds of where we've been over the last five or six months.
Any questions?
Sounds good.
Are we, it's still on, on schedule?
At the moment, it is. No, we're confident that we are. We're in good, good shape at the moment, on budget and on time. I'm going to knock on anything that I can find because it's still early, but.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, new business.
Thank you. For January, we have our Program of Studies. So I'd first like to ask how middle school to come up for the Holton Richmond Program of Studies. The superintendent recommends the HRMS Program of Studies for a first reading.
So moved.
Hi, everybody.
So we have a presentation for you. Thank you.
So this year's Program of Studies, we felt like it was an appropriate time to really take a step back and make sure that the document was really fully aligned to the current strategic plan and the current initiatives that the district is pursuing. So we really did a huge overhaul in the first, I'd say, the introductory pages of the document. We removed a lot of language and a lot of references that were probably at least 10 years old in terms of philosophy and approach. So the first, on the memo that I submitted, the first five points are really to that, that we wanted to make sure that the current program aligns to the current strategic plan and the major initiatives and language that the district is using. And we just felt that that really more accurately, you know, represented our approach. Specifically into the curriculum, starting with item six, we made sure that the grade seven social studies curriculum is now updated. We've been phasing that in so that we now have civics at grade eight. And then six and seven really encompass both the geography and the ancient, the ancient history in their new sequences. So those descriptions are updated. And then the last, the next chunk that we looked at was within our exploratory courses. So items seven, eight, and nine, we took really a focused look at our technology courses and made sure that, again, the language was current. So we, we sort of reorganized our engineering classes more around the concept of STEM, which is what we've shifted to and that aligns with the frameworks. Rather than having CAD as a separate class, CAD will be integrated into all the engineering courses. You know, using design software just seems like really should be integrated throughout the whole process rather than sort of a one-stop in sixth grade. We are keeping robotics as a standalone class, though, in sixth grade. And then we also wanted to make sure that our computer ed class, we brought Project Lead the Way down to grade eight. So we wanted to make sure that that was described in the eighth grade computer education descriptions as well. So that was sort of the next major overhaul in our Program of Studies. And then the last two items were really just, again, to reflect, you know, updated information around extracurricular clubs and activities. And then lastly, we wanted to sort of memorialize our shift from the old sustained silent reading block or SSR to the new RISE block, which has become sort of just part of the middle school vocabulary now, where kids have that period every day of 25 minutes to do reteaching, to do intervention work. They can still do silent reading. And then it's an opportunity for teachers to do extension work, either lengthen the time that a block takes or for kids to get in, maybe kids that have completed all the tasks to do some extension and work to push their, their learning. So we wanted to just make sure that that language was sort of updated and replaced in our Program of Studies. So those are sort of broadly the changes that we are proposing.
Questions? Jeff?
No, I know there's a couple of people at, was it FinCom? And all of our committees would be happy if civics is getting more play. So we're going to definitely highlight that. Now, if you can work on cursive, too. Let's get that back.
I would say civics has been a huge success. The eighth grade, the students are so engaged. They've had, they've debated weighty topics. And they, I have to say, they've done it. I've sat in on some of the debates. They've done it in a civil and respectful manner. I'm so impressed with the discourse. We have differing opinions from kids. And I think it's, it's really been a great engaging process for the kids to be involved in. So we're really excited about it. And it also makes the Washington trip so much more meaningful. I think it's really going to be.
But they may learn bad habits when they get down.
Yeah, well, we'll do our best. We'll do our best. But I think it's really been a great addition to the eighth grade experience. We're really excited about it.
Is that part of interdisciplinary as well? So do you do, does it include some English as well? Or, because I know there's a couple of courses where there's some joint sharing of, I didn't know civics was part of that as well.
I think this year where it's a new, you know, completely new curriculum, new frameworks, I think they're just really trying to kind of get their heads around it. Now, the way that the frameworks are written for the new civics curriculum, there is a whole literacy piece that is on equal footing with the content and the skills specific. So it's sort of inherently interdisciplinary with, with the English curriculum. But beyond that, and I think when the students do the civics projects that are part of the new law that was passed, the new legislation around civics, I'm sure that will pull in some interdisciplinary pieces as kids start to dig into the community projects that they want to undertake.
Thanks.
Eric?
Yeah, I think, hard to think of a time when civics was more important, really. And so I'm glad to see that, that that program's going well. I want to talk a little bit about the RISE block. And really, just logistically, how does that work? You've got, what, three teams per grade? So do they all do the RISE block at the same time? Do the teachers and students from all, all of the team meet in one place? Logistically, how does that all work?
So originally, you know, if you go back, we had SSR, sustained silent reading, which was essentially for an agreed-upon time in the day, for 25 minutes, you're just going to read silently. And that, you know, that was sort of a practice that when middle schools first came into existence, that was very popular with, with middle school design. So the time is built in. It's different in each grade level. Sixth grade always has RISE block right after lunch. So after they go back from lunch to whatever class they're in, it's RISE block. Seventh grade, it occurs at the same time, the first, before lunch. And then eighth grade, it depends on which lunch they have. But it always happens, to kind of fully answer the question, it always happens during the lunch block. It happens around that time. In terms of what the kids do, what we did this year, where it's the first year we're doing, we really gave the autonomy to teams and to grade levels. And we gave them lots of ideas and lots of options. And as a faculty, we've been sort of reviewing that and working on it this year with the hope that each year we'll sort of formalize a little more what happens. So different teams and different grade levels have really used it in a variety of ways. Seventh grade, there's a team that like every Monday for RISE block is an organization time. And the kids, whatever class they're in, they use that time to make sure they're fully organized for the week. Planners are filled out. Google Drive is organized. They've, that's come up as, I think, a really successful practice. Some classes have used it to really just extend the teaching block. And that's proven, you know, really helpful for some of the exploratories, like a chorus, an extra 25 minutes of rehearsal time. So important, especially with concerts coming up this week, things like that. So it's, right now, it's by grade level. The teams have the autonomy, the teachers have the autonomy to really use that time as they see fit. Kids are moving, too. So they might be in English class for RISE block. But if there are kids that maybe need to work with the math teacher, they're able to work on that. So it's, there's some fluidity there. And I think that's proven to be successful.
Good. Okay, that kind of answers. I was wondering just, where do they go? Not even so much where do they do, but how do you make sure that the kid in English, if he really needs help in math, can go there? So that's good.
And I think it's been nice, too, because there's been a, I think, especially with the older kids, there's a chance for them to self-advocate and say, I know I need to see my science teacher. Can I, can we make a plan to come during RISE block? And you'll see a lot of kids, they'll work with one teacher to get a pass to then access what they need. And I love that we have kids that are able to sort of look at where they are and say, okay, I know I need to use this time. And they're able to do it. So I think so far, it's been, it's gone fairly well.
Yeah, sounds good.
We're excited about it.
Look, we're glad to hear that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You. Arthur?
Also.
Dave?
I'm all set as well.
I like how the STEM programs have been added, which will be a nice carryover for the students that are interested into it coming into high school, where there's additional Project Lead the Way classes. So it will give them, you know, whether a taste of it in middle school. So that, I'd like seeing that in the, in the new book, handbook, course offerings. Other than that, I didn't have any questions. But thank you very much for coming this evening and explaining the additions and changes to the handbook. Thank you.
Welcome.
So there was a motion in the second. All those in favor of first reading?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have our DHS Program of Studies. And you'll see that transition from what you just heard from the middle school into the courses and the connections from our work in the second year of our strategic plan. So the superintendent recommends the DHS Program of Studies for a first reading.
So moved. Second.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for welcoming us to talk about our Program of Studies. Really quickly, much like the middle school, we did some overhauls. We had some course descriptions that hadn't been touched and some new frameworks were put into place. So we spent, as a staff, a couple of months really looking at the Program of Studies, the course descriptions, the recommended course sequences, all of those types of things to get to us, to get us to December, where we had new courses approved in a draft for, for year review. Some of the highlighted changes, as I said, as we said in the memo that we presented, in particular, social studies, again, similar to the middle school, has updated their framework. So particularly in world history and United States history, we've had to adjust some time periods, not significantly, but enough to kind of rejigger some course descriptions, particularly as it pertains to the civics in US1, where we won't be spending as much time talking about the Constitution. We'll probably be going more towards revolution and moving forward. Science, again, we recommended our course sequence in the table in and of itself is a little clearer and more concise. And we included our Project Lead the Way courses. Some adjustments, computer applications, the course formerly known as computer applications is evolving into an intro to computer science to better align with some of the other course offerings we have as for upperclassmen. And also to, again, play off the good work of HRMS and what they're doing in eighth grade tech. We have three intervention courses, tier three. Last time I was here with you guys in December, we talked about MTSS. We are dipping our toe in the water and putting up for review three tier three intervention courses for ninth and 10th grade students in ELA math and biology. Biology would be primarily for ninth grade students. We'd have additional PE and health elective courses, too, for upperclassmen that kind of do a whole various interests and things that they might be more interested in in order to take a PE class. The other larger piece is our transition in world language. Our world language department has been doing yeoman work, really overhauling and being thoughtful about their practice and focusing on speaking instead of more grammar-centric practice. So we renamed all of our courses. We changed all of our course descriptions to better reflect outputs that kids are going to be engaged in, that better align with some of the actful standards because the world language frameworks haven't been touched since, I think, 2000, 2001. So we're more aligned with the national standards, which is what's happening in our, not only K-PAN, but across the state. So again, those course offerings and course descriptions better illustrate and illuminate what we're doing in the classroom. And so this is the list of our new courses. Again, I chunked them out, but generally speaking, we are developing a whole host of new courses that really reflect some innovative practices, leveraging our technology, supporting kids where they are and, you know, allowing kids to kind of discover some passions as well. So we have, in particular, our 12th grade elective ELA courses that we presented last year were pretty, have been pretty successful. So we're going to put another choice on there and see if, if it resonates with anybody. And then in the tech ed space as well, all of those courses will be open to freshmen. So we actually met with the HRMS team leaders and guidance counselors today to begin those conversations as scheduling starts in short order.
Any questions? Okay. Dave? Any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. One, just a memory refresher for me. You talked about three intervention courses.
Sure.
Can you just remind me what those are?
So tier three intervention, so they're going to be in math, ELA, biology. We've never had them before. They are going to be for students who need some additional support during the school day that are not on IEP. So it's a smaller group of students that will be identified through the scheduling process that would need some more focused support in foundational skills.
So they'll take whatever course they're in. Let's say it's a math course. And then they'll get this additional intervention course to give them the additional support they need.
Yep. It's going to be a semester-long course. All of those are semester-long courses.
Great. Excellent. And then I'm just curious, I know last year you launched a bunch of new ELA courses. We heard about the Page to Stage program, which sounded really successful. I was just wondering, did all of those courses run?
No, not all of them ran. So this year, we ran Evolution of a Hero with Mr. Milkerick, Page to Stage with Ms. Saste, Writer's Workshop. We collapsed the short story, a couple of kids wanted a short story. So we collapsed that in the Writer's Workshop, College Career and Communications. And then we are running one section of 12 honors, like kind of more straight 12 honors in AP Lit. So while not all of them ran, the students were really interested. We had more students, oh, and Project Citizen as well. Excuse me, Ms. Linquist, Project Citizen class. So we had the vast majority of seniors pick one of those courses. And the feedback has been from the students. They've enjoyed it and it's prepared them in a lot of different ways than a more traditional class.
And you think those will run again and then adding these potential options?
I'm hopeful. You've got some good word on the street, so.
That's what you need, right?
Exactly.
Excellent. Thank you.
Arthur?
Can you explain to me a little bit more about the world language changes?
Sure. So traditionally, world language has been taught in a very grammar-centric way. Sarah, star, tenses of verbs. And we've been focused more on those types of things instead of getting students more comfortable speaking in a world language. The biggest goal of our world language department is to ensure kids can go and leave DHS and be able to speak a language in a different country, or not even a different country in our country, and be comfortable doing that. We have students who aren't as comfortable doing that. I think it's hard to speak a world language in a, in a class of your peers. So what we're doing is transitioning to having, it is best research-based best practice, having students in the course, the teachers in the course, speaking in Spanish or French the entire time. So it was more of an immersion kind of approach. And we have in Spanish II this year and a little bit in Spanish III, we started taking on some of those techniques. And we're finding that the students are really kind of finding more confidence in their speaking ability and being able to produce language because that output, that production, is where we want to spend most of our effort and be able to assess students. Connected to that, we're looking at doing more authentic resources. So Spanish or French media, books, plays, those types of things. And books as simple as what, you know, my kids have is C-Spot Run, something comparable in Spanish and French. So as they're learning languages, our kids would learn English, we want to kind of provide that same experience in a, in a world language.
So when they go to, when they go to class, like when the door closes, they're only going to speak the.
We're going to try our very best.
Which I, which I think is good because I think that they didn't really, they couldn't really do that. Watching my kids and their friends over the past many years, they spend a lot of times on memorizing different, you know, ways of.
Conjugating a verb.
Conjugating a verb, right? And so.
I don't think, you know, it really translated to being able[1672.85] I don't think, you know, it really translated to being able to really do what you're saying.
Right. And I think, I think the teachers are spending a significant amount of time and effort creating opportunities for kids to engage in the language, and so, when they're leaving, they are more fluent. Connected to that, we also do the Seal of Biliteracy that we, I think we talked about last year. We have all of our seniors, AP students are up first, and all of our non-native speakers take the Seal of Biliteracy. So, we are endorsing students who are fluent at a certain level in multiple languages. So, right now, we have, I think, for this graduating class, already five students that are non-native speakers. So, kind of connected to this is this idea that we want students to feel confident and comfortable and celebrate their use of language that's not English.
I just think it also would be more, more fun for the kids, and they'd think they're actually achieving something if they could really speak and not have to worry about, you know, a letter or a little mark and all, you know. I took Latin when I was in high school. They had that back then, right?
Yes, they did.
Mr. McIsaac.
Mr. McIsaac.
We went to school at the same time, if you guys don't know. Tell me about the history changes. What, what do you mean by changes of dates?
So, typically, in United States history, at the high school level, you'd cover from the pilgrims to present day. And so, with the eighth grade taking kind of the civics, Constitution portion of our, of our history, U.S. 1 is able to kind of move up chronologically the date in where, where we would pick up. So, where would we would pick up is post, almost post-American Revolution, post-Bill of Rights, post-Constitution, which would allow us to get to more present day in U.S. II, which would get us to more like civil rights and those kind of more contemporary topics that we want kids to kind of dive into. And with the civics pieces, I think they're going to, it's going to be a much easier kind of road to do that, particularly with the discourse that they're having in eighth grade, being able to kind of get to those topics.
I mean, basically, I think that's good. The pilgrims stuff is kind of boring anyway.
I'm a former history teacher, it's not all boring.
Listen, I love history, but I'm bored with the pilgrims.
They're not the most raucous people.
No, you know, but, but I don't think we should miss the Constitution.
We're not, we're not. No, we're not. I promise you. Eighth grade does a great job, and then, if we got to do a little dipsticking every once in a while, but.
Plus, the pilgrims stuff, don't they go to Plymouth Rock when they're in like third or fourth grade?
Third grade.
They'll remember that as being.
And AP, APUS does go to, with a primary study, primary source kind of thing that they do.
I went on that trip, I think, with one of my kids, and it was like the saddest thing when I saw the tiny pebble. But anyway, thanks, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Eric?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I tend to agree with Arthur on the, on the speaking of the language being more important. My daughter's a teacher in Gloucester, and she has found that lots of times, if she's doing an IEP meeting or something, being able to speak the language is a tremendous advantage. On the other hand, I doubt that she actually does very much writing in Spanish. So, I think the ability to communicate verbally with people who are native speakers is probably more important. I also agree with you on the history piece, as much as, you know, right now, I think, I think students need to be able to understand patterns in history and how things, if history doesn't repeat, it almost repeats and that sort of thing. So, yeah, the pilgrims are interesting and how everything gets started, but really, the more analytical requirements that start in sort of the late colonial period and on into, gee, how did this all happen and why? And what does it mean for us today, I think is very important.
And I think, too, I think what the frameworks do really well is raise marginalized voices. So, women in the colonial period, African-Americans during the Civil War, like all those marginalized voices, we're hearing more from in terms of sources and concentrating on those, those American experiences as well, which I think is really fruitful when we talk about more contemporary topics.
The other thing I saw in this, in our Program of Studies that I walked away just really happy about was the, the range of choices and opportunities that students are getting between the Pathways Program and then Virtual Reality High School, the Dual Enrollment Program, which allows people to take courses at, I believe it's North Shore Community and at Davenport, or is it other colleges, too? Just North Shore?
North Shore.
Yep. And the Capstone Project, the, tell us a little bit about the Seal of Biliteracy and the Capstone Project.
So, the Seal of Biliteracy is what I had mentioned during world language, that students can take a test, a standards-based test, and they are assessed in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. They have to achieve a certain of intermediate, mid-intermediate, high to receive this distinction, and also pass the ELAM test with, well, what was 220 and above. I'm not remembering the score, the new score metric off the top of my head right now. So, they need to do that to get the Seal of Biliteracy, and we've honored that last year at Academic Recognition Night. So, that's the Seal of Biliteracy. The Capstone is a relatively new piece, particularly for those students who are taking multiple APs and whose internship might be cut short because they are taking those AP exams those first two weeks of May. So, they're going to be able to kind of dive into a topic of their choice with a, with a teacher that they connect with, that can kind of supervise that process, and really dive into a topic and do some, something with it. Again, student voice and choice is a, is a big kind of push for us in being able to, students to be able to explore topics that maybe they got a kind of a cursory glance at in a physics class, but they want to kind of dig more deeply into.
Well, I thought, if I read it right, it's a hundred-hour commitment from the students to do the coursework. So, I mean, that's, someone's going to really have to be devoted to their, that interest who, and they can get so much out of that. So, I loved that. And the Seal of Biliteracy would be a great thing, it seems to me, to put on a resume.
Yes.
So, there's all kinds of opportunities. And as I say, the, the Pathways Program looks great. I hope we can expand that because it seems to, it's a, what you're doing is sort of giving kids a concentration, but it doesn't seem like they're missing anything on the other end. They still have to take all the requirements. So, to me, that's a real win-win. I love that.
And I think it allows kids to explore, and it also allows them, you know, if they explore and they figure out, this may not be for me, we're not making a decision about college and going to a very specialized technical environment where they're going to be freshman year, and they're going to be like, hmm, maybe this isn't what I want to do, and go somewhere else. So, if we can expose students to those different types of courses and jobs and vocations, I think we're positioning our kids to be more successful post.
This all sounds really terrific, and I like the rhetoric course, too. Freshman taking rhetoric, not bad. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Beth, can I just jump in real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Just something Eric just said. The Capstone Program, is that going to be restricted to kids that are taking a high number of AP courses?
No.
All right. I just want to make sure that we're making this internship slash Capstone experience as robust as possible and as flexible as possible for kids that don't want to take an internship.
And I think the impetus maybe was that kind of the students who did not have as long of an internship, but yeah, it's flexible enough to have any student engage.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Jeff?
Well, I know a lot of folks are focused on 1787 and the, oh, wait. I'm focused, obviously, on kind of on the tech stuff. So, how, well, so, first question is, a lot of these are, I almost call them IOT, but manufacturing, CNC, or what is the rationale for these? Is it part of the pathways? Is that for that?
Yes. Yep. So, it's part of the pathways, but it's also exposing students to kind of the technology side, the manufacturing side, but we've secured some grant funding to purchase some. I've learned more about CNC milling machines and scanners, printers, 3D printer. I've learned more about stuff than I've ever thought I would, would this year, but I think it's positioning kids to better understand what that, that job sector is all about. And as, you know, if they take one of these courses as freshmen and they, you know, they really kind of, it resonates with them, we can go into that computer integrated manufacturing. You can go into i, Project Lead the Way, Introduction to Engineering Design, and kind of build those skills out. What we're trying to do is expose as many kids as possible, if that is, is something that they're interested in, that they can do those things, and, and the technology as well. So, it's the virtual pieces and actually being able to use the equipment as well.
That's good. Our, our tech offerings, I mean, this is just more of a comment, are exceptional. I mean, they are really, really good. I mean, if you think about what our students can do and all the programming, and this just adds an extra layer to it. So, my question then is, this is one area that is constantly changing, right? I know we can make some changes with history and other things, but it's kind of still there. It's kind of what you teach. But this is changing literally every few months.
Day-to-day.
And I know the state has requirements for a lot of the other areas, right? So, English, math, and we're going to change the constructs and civics, but.
Right.
For technology, the state doesn't.
No.
And even if it did, we're so far beyond. So, what is our guiding principle as to say, okay, look, this next year, we have to teach Swift or Python or something else like that? Who, how, what's that process?
So, I think we, we try to stay current as best we can through our connections to things like Project Lead the Way, who I think do bring in kind of best practice or most current pieces. I think it is hard to keep up, but I think we have foundational courses that, if things change in the upper echelons of that, so the Python, the AP, like AP Computer Science-y type of stuff. That stuff will evolve with those courses, so College Board will always kind of feed into us with those things. I think we have all the equipment we would ever need to be able to be flexible and adaptable as things change. But I think, again, I go back to those kind of freshman, the courses that are up there right now, the freshman year courses, those foundational skills aren't going to change. So, I think we have to get that first, and then, as, as the upper, upperclassmen courses kind of evolve, we are as flexible as we can with our partners kind of leading the way.
Yeah. I mean, what I, what I thought was, and that's why this is amazing, that these are freshman-level courses, which are, what students know now from a technology perspective, I'm not going to say is scary, but it's scary because, I mean, they can program apps. Like, you talk about security and everything, like, that's middle school right now. So, they're going to be doing manufacturing and CNC machines as a freshman, you know. I know we think it's kind of AP, but I will guarantee there's a lot of kids that can.
Well, we're also capitalizing on the good work down at HRMS with Project Lead, what Lisa D. Orlando and the team down there is doing. So, they're coming to us with great skills, and I think we're just kind of continuing on that trajectory, for sure.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Amazon Z.
Yeah.
So, yes. So, can you just explain, are they going to the Amazon? Is that?
It is an option, yes.
It's an option. It's not a requirement.
No.
Because I was just reading the description, and it said, participants in an expedition will involve, you know, immersion in an ecosystem, you know, talk with natives, and so, just, can you touch upon it a little bit more?
Sure. So, he taught, so he taught an Amazon class, not last year, but the year before, and so, he has some contacts, Mr. Gallo has contacts down in the Amazon, and really kind of wanted to reframe the course around sustainability and how indigenous people kind of are, are surviving in the kind of climate-changing world. And so, he reframed the course to kind of fit that, that immersion experience, he would, if possible, you know, if kids could, can do it, that'd be great, but it's not something that they have to do. Obviously, it's not an inexpensive journey down there, but we want kids to be able to be exposed to that if they're so inclined to kind of take that course, for sure.
Right. And so, the enrollment in that course is selective?
Yes.
Okay. Just for commitment purposes, right, of the course?
Right. But even still, if, if a student's not able to attend, like, we will work it out.
Yep. Okay. Great. No, that was the only question. Other questions I had had were asked, so thank you. Thank you very much. So, nothing else. So, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor, first reading for the high school handbook?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right. That passes.
Hey, great. Thank you so much for being here tonight and presenting our Program of Studies. Thank you.
So, our next is the annual review of the superintendent's contract. So, we met earlier this evening in an executive session to discuss Lisa's contract, and we discussed certain.
Madam Chair, I have a motion to get us started. I would propose that for the next year, that the superintendent receive a 2% raise, which would bring her salary to $190,158.60, and a $2,800 equity adjustment, which would bring the total compensation to $192,958.60.
Any discussion?
May I speak to that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
As we do every year, we look at really three things when it comes to trying to figure out the, the right compensation for a superintendent. And one is her overall performance and our view of that and satisfaction with that, and we took care of that last month when we reviewed the superintendent's performance. Then, when you're actually trying to look at what's the right compensation, you have to look at what's happening in the real world when it comes to superintendent compensation, and also the experience level that Dr. Dana has at this point, as opposed to some of the other superintendents. So, what we have done is looked at comparable districts, and particularly some of those that the town also looks at when putting together its financial comparisons, as we saw at the financial summit. And then, you look at superintendents who, you know, in, in some local districts who have come in, say, their first year as a superintendent, first year in the position, $183,000, and that's in a town pretty much right next door. You've got superintendents with six years' experience at $198,900. You've got another superintendent, one year experience, $181,583. And you keep going down until you get to our superintendent, who has now in her 16th year of experience with our district. And we know from what people have said, and I think you heard this at the MASNC conference, that Lisa is looked at as someone who can be a mentor to other superintendents and a source of knowledge and information. So, you put all of that together, and you, you give a raise of 2%, which I think is reasonable in terms of the reflection of the town budget and what, generally speaking, executives should be looking at. But then, you also have to look at the fact that, you know, more and more superintendents come in, and because of the demand, they're paid a higher salary starting out. So, the truth is, even with an increase to just under $193,000, depending on the districts you look at locally, Lisa isn't even quite at the average, just around the average. And some of that is, you are comfortable here, we are comfortable with you, and that's tough to put a dollar figure on. I hope you're happy here. You seem to be.
Yes, thank you.
But you've also put together a terrific team. You know, it's to your credit, the ingenuity and the, and your staff's credit, to the thoughtfulness that we're seeing, the opportunities that I talked about earlier with the high school. So, again, factoring all of those in, I simply think this is reasonable, and I hope my, my colleagues will agree. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Eric. Jeff, any thing to add?
No. I mean, I think, you know, I tend to weight performance a little bit more than length, and I think performance has been excellent. I think the team that you've built, I think the presentations that we get every month, we're, have a great update and understanding. We are progressing. We are moving forward. We are constantly growing, you know, and we have a community here, and we deal with a lot of challenges. I mean, I think that's the other thing people sort of forget, which is, there are constant changes and challenges which happen every single year, and we talk about this in the performance evaluation as well. But that, to me, is, is important, and yes, there, the equity adjustment is important this year because when you look at some of those numbers that have been published for other superintendents, you know, and, you know, Dr. Dana's still not kind of at the average, then, you know, you want to make sure that's taken into account. So, a lot of what Eric said, so I agree.
You. Arthur?
Yeah, again, I agree with much of what, what Eric said also. We already discussed the performance last, last, last month, and, and I think as a group, we all feel that Lisa's doing a really good job here, and we all want her to continue on. So, that brings us to trying to figure out what the right amount is, and I don't want to repeat everything that Eric said, but I do want to say this, that yes, $192,900 and some change is a lot of money, but it's average money for a superintendent of a school system, of like school systems, like ours, with, in like towns in, in the area. And I think that's fair. I think that's fair to the town, and I think it's, and Lisa believes it's fair to her. And, and so, I think we, we hit something that, that works for us. You know, three, there's three, there's three people that, there are three, three towns on the list that we're looking at right now that have first-year superintendents, first-year in the district, first-year in the, as a superintendent, and the, and the range for those three towns basically is between 180, 182 and 189. Okay? So, that's what first-year, first, first year of experience, first-year in a district. That's what, what people are paying. All right? So, so we're talking here about something, I think when, when Eric talked about the 2% raise, it really didn't get us much over that. And so, that, that's why we felt the need to do an equity adjustment. We've done them a couple of times in the past because we want, we want Lisa to be at least where the average is. And again, and I think, I think, again, she's, she's happy with that. It works for us, it works for her, that she's happy in the district, it works for the town because it's something that's fair. And, and so, I, I support the motion that Eric made.
Thank you. Dave?
Ditto, I guess, if I can say that three times to what my colleagues have said. Lisa's doing a fantastic job. We want her to stay, and that's certainly a fair salary when you look at others in similar districts. So, happy to support that.
Excellent. And I, too, agree with my colleagues here. We're very thankful that we have you here. We're, I believe, lucky as a district, especially with the team that you've built and where We're, I believe, lucky as a district, especially with the team that you've built and where you are taking us as a district. So thank you very much. So the motion Eric was, can you just repeat that? Because did you want to add in a, an additional year?
I was going to do that by a separate motion.
Okay. All right, that's fine. All right. So for the first motion from Eric was, want to just read it one more time?
So it's a 2% raise plus a $2,800 equity adjustment, which would bring the total compensation to $192,958.60.
Okay. And then there was a second by Arthur?
Arthur.
Okay. And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. So that passes.
No, Madam Chair, I would move that we increase the length of the superintendent's contract by an additional year, which would take us through 2025. Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Again, I'll, I'll speak to that just briefly. You can have up to six years, you know, this takes us three-year five. I can't speak very clearly, but for myself, I think I love this partnership. I love the energy that I see. And yes, there are, you know, there's always things that can be improved. The day we think we have the, the day we think the work's done, we all ought to do something else. And there's always more that can be done, but more and more, I like what I see happening here, and I, you know, hope you like working with us and want to continue. So I think keeping it at, at five years is very reasonable at this point.
Anyone else? Arthur?
I would agree with Eric.
Dave, Jeff?
I agree.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay. Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
The next item is a fundraising request.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends the approval of the fundraising events for the DHS Girls' Basketball Team and the DHS Girls' Basketball Cheerleaders.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Unfinished business? There is none? So order of business, communication.
Thank you. We always link our North Shore Education Consortium website, and this month, we have our 2018-19 annual report. It is part of the legislation and requirements with the state, so you'll see the annual report and the different programs that, the successes of last year. And then we also have, we spoke about the financial statement, that we did have a clean audit, and now it has been approved by the board also, so you have that for your reference.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Legislation?
Nothing really to report this month. The legislative session is kind of just getting back rolling again, so nothing new at the moment.
Okay. Thank you. Subcommittee liaison updates. DEEP, we will hold our monthly meeting this month, this Wednesday, 7:45 here at Danvers High School. We will be visiting a couple classrooms to see some DEEP grants in action. Looking forward to that. Everyone is invited to come. We also, the DEEP Spelling Bee, the Holton Richmond Spelling Bee, will be taking place next Wednesday, January 22nd, 6:00 PM, here at the Danvers High Auditorium. So we have about 45 middle schoolers that will be competing in the Spelling Bee. The winner of the Spelling Bee will go on to try to qualify for the regional Spelling Bee that will be taking place inland later on in the spring, like March. Yep. And the winner of that Spelling Bee goes on to represent at the National Spelling Bee in Washington sometime probably in May, I think that happens. So please, again, free event, everyone's invited to come. Come see some of these great spellers. It's incredible how much they can spell. It's a great event. So just want to thank the middle school and Ellen Ferriek and Adam and all his team there, and Mary for coordinating, helping to coordinate that. Danvers Cares, Jeff?
So Danvers Cares continues to do a lot of really good work in the community, a lot of events and things that they support. I'll just mention a couple. One is tips training. So I don't know if folks know, this is the alcohol bartender server prevention that is done, so Danvers Cares supports that. So they do that in town. That was done in December. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is going to be taking place the week of February 24th, so that's the 2020. There's a lot of interest in that, obviously, with the vaping ban that has occurred, and so there's new questions that are going to be added regarding perception of harm, peer disapproval, parental disapproval as well. And it's really trying to get into, you know, the, the understanding of why vaping is still on the increase, right? There's still a lot of issues with that, and so there's, there's a lot of work that Danvers Cares is doing to improve that. Community Narcan distribution, we'll have a little bit more on that. They're doing a soft rollout for the community, but Narcan will be available for most members, I believe, in Danvers. So they'll discuss that and ways to, to do that. The other was the Smith mural project. Are, well, were you going to mention that at an upcoming meeting, I suppose, or?
Could have them come and do a presentation like that.
All right. So we'll talk about that, too. So.
Okay. CPAC?
CPAC, I have the update. So they've been trying to do an every-other-month presentation and meeting. Last Thursday, January 9th, was the, for January, and Desi came to present information on the upcoming tiered focus review, which is our, the CPR, the Coordinated Program Reviews from the state. It's usually on a six-year cycle, and then we do our mid-year cycle, so it's our turn again for that. That will happen this month. And we also had the Commonwealth Learning, which I believe is also a DEEP member in their work with us. So they presented tips for our parents on executive functioning, functioning in homework strategies. They had more parents than have attended in some of our past meetings, so we had approximately 15 parents. We thank them for attending. The presentation was well-received, and parents commented that they would like to have the Commonwealth Learning, come back and present more on a similar topic. We have our two coaches, Alicia and Amanda. They have elementary age, really their preschool, kindergarten-age students, and they're working on a presentation for the next meeting, which will take place in March.
Thank you. Policy?
We have not met since our last meeting, but we do have one scheduled before our next meeting.
Yes, for the 23rd of this month. Oh, 24th. Thank you. 24th of this month.
Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee.
We mentioned the Martin Luther King Celebration, and the, in December, just before Christmas, there was the lighting of the menorah on the, at the library, which was very well, well-attended. And the committee continues to do its work to try and help make a divided world less divided.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the CPAC. Again, they are on Facebook, and they do an awesome, awesome job of getting information out there, not just from CPAC, but like the Commonwealth Learning, other articles and things about, like, IEPs, 504s, how to, you know, address issues, wealth of information, doing an awesome job with it. I suggest that everyone, even if you do not have a child currently receiving, or if you do, to like them on Facebook, because the information, even when I see some things, I'm like, ooh, that looks interesting. Guest speakers, topics that are being held other places, not just here in Danvers. So it's, it's a great resource for families. Minutes?
Madam Chair, I move that the minutes of the December 9th, 2019 regular meeting be approved and released, and I move that the minutes from the December 9th, 2019 executive session be approved but not released.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Budget and donations?
Before you, your monthly budget report for the month of December. Updating on the special education number, that number does remain the same as the previous month. We are awaiting the potential of two move-in students during early February, so you'll see some more information, potential change as we get into that. We are still confident that, working with the town and looking at our reserves and circuit breaker, that we have adequate funds to close the year out. And then we'll continue to work on our budget process for the FY21 budget, which will be coming up in February for our budget hearing. And so we're working with the town and the ongoing budget team to look at how the overall town budget picture works and how we balance all of the needs of the town. The second report you have is our budget transfers report for mid-year. We do this twice a year. We do it once in September for all of the changes that come from when we proposed the budget through the start of school, and then we do it one more time in January as we get ready for the next budget, to make sure that everything's in line for our budget request. So you'll see there's only, it only affects two different lines, and both were, as we implemented non-union increases over the summer, some of the accounts were missed, so the money just wasn't moved from management reserve to the appropriate salary lines. So it's really not a budget change of any effect, just cleaning up some accounting corrections. We also have one donation for this month, so thank you to the Cranny Company and their Division Cranny Cares, who made a $1,000 donation to the Riverside School, which will help go towards purchasing books for our classroom libraries as we look at implementing our reading and writers workshop model.
That's great. Any questions? Anyone for Keith? No? Thank you. Personnel?
Very busy month. One retirement.
It's the most empty personnel report ever.
They're like, is this okay? I was like, yes, this is glorious. We've been hoping.
Let's have some more excitement next month.